Well, hello and welcome to Northeast Ohio Media Group Debates. I'm Bruce Geiselman. Today, we're going to host a debate for North Olmsted City Council at Large seats, which are up for election November 3rd. The candidates are going to introduce themselves in just a minute, but first, here are the rules. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then, we'll ask questions, giving each candidate 90 seconds to answer and a minute for a follow-up. At the end, we'll ask, in the final 10 minutes, we're going to ask the candidates to ask each other questions with 60 seconds permitted for the answers. So, let's get started. With us today is incumbent Dwayne Limpert, who is running for the Council at Large seat. He's been on council for, I believe, two years now, right?
Correct, yep.
And challenger, Tim Smith. And actually, Mr. Smith previously served on council. You were appointed to fill an unexpired term, which I believe was in 2013, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Now, also running are incumbents Kevin Carney and Angelo Williamson. They were invited to the debate, but they are not with us today. Now, the top three vote-getters will win election in November. So, let's move on to the first question, and we're going to start with Mr. Limpert. "North Olmsted City Council now, for more than a year, has been discussing how to address residents' complaints about a growing deer population in the city. And council has been divided on whether to allow licensed hunters to bow hunt or to use police sharpshooters to thin the deer herd. Where do you stand on this issue and why?"
Yeah, thank you, Bruce. You know, anytime you deal with our wildlife here in the state of Ohio, it's always a very touchy subject for our residents and very impassioned. You know, myself, I would hate to see a deer be killed through bullet, car, bow, or bullet. But unfortunately, you know, as advised to us by the Department of Natural Resources and our administration and residents, as I went around campaigning the last two years, it's an issue that we felt like it was time to deal with. We have actually the legislation coming up in the next readings after several iterations of amendments, and we definitely are, I am for managing that deer population, and I think we wrote some good legislation to do that.
Okay. But in terms of, I think you were one of the few council members who actually favored allowing bow hunting.
Yeah, you know, I looked at that, and I was looking at both ways. The Department of Natural Resources gave us subject matter experts that we spent several meetings with, some of our members of council, going through different drafts and advisement, and we had actually three different committees of a whole meeting to go through and really understand what the issue was. And, you know, I went with those, the subject matter experts. And I think that, as the administration says, while it's not the ideal solution, given when the bow, when culling season occurs in the winter, without something like that, you're really limited to one, kind of a one-shot deal, literally, with that, without a bow hunting option. Again, I think it was a tough, a lot of good ideas and a lot of tough decisions on that, but that's the way I voted.
Okay. Mr. Smith, what is your position? Do you favor bow hunting, sharpshooters, a combination of both? Or none?
Well, actually, I did a little research, and there are, I think there are some other options we have that I don't know if they really addressed. There are fertility and sterilization feed. I've researched some of the, I know Michigan, Wisconsin, and Minnesota, some of their communities are using a combination of a sharpshooter to cull the deer, the excess population, and they're using, you know, certain types of plants to try and ward off the deer from coming into people's neighborhoods. You know, a sterilization, you know, type of feed that will temporarily, you know, sterilize some of the deer populations so they're less doe, or less fawns are bred. You know, no one wants to see Bambi shot, but, you know, it is a dangerous situation. There's been an increase in the amount of, you know, vehicular accidents that are involving deer. And I spoke with a couple of police officers who have been on scenes where they had to put the deer down, and that's a situation no one wants to see either. So, I think that a combination of a few different ideas would be the proper way to go about doing that.
Okay. Do either of you want a 60-second follow-up, or should we move on to the next question?
No, I think we can move on to the next question.
Now, North Olmsted residents for years have been plagued by flooding in their basements, and I think last year especially, there was a problem. There were several public forums on this, and what has the city done to try to address this? What more do you think the city should do? And we'll start this time with Mr. Smith.
Well, I think there have been a lot of great strides, you know, that the city has made. You know, there's been some additional retention basins, you know, that have been built. They're working on cleaning out the catch basins and the silt that's built up in the storm systems, but there's a long way to go. You know, there's been decades of neglect, I think, on our storm systems, and if you talk to the engineers in the city, they'll all pretty much agree that the system is too small for the amount of, you know, building that we've had seen in the city, and it just is overwhelmed. One idea, and I even noticed it in the master plan, is to kind of take our gutter systems, right, where right now, it's by code, your gutter has to go into the storm system. And, you know, they actually spoke about encouraging people to get a, like a rain barrel or cistern type of system where they can divert that water, and not only is that conserving water, but it also saves the money, you know, for the residents who don't have to buy water to water their gardens or, you know, their plants and things that they put out. And if you, even if you had one out of every three or four houses that diverted the water into a system like that, you'd take tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of gallons out of the storm system every time it rained.
Okay. And then, Mr. Limpert?
Yeah, I mean, the rain barrel, for instance, is something that I think we're proactively looking at. We also have made some policy changes to allow people to detach gutters in case of high-level rains for a period of time. So, I think those have both made good steps. And the administration has been working aggressively to try to not only acquire land, but also build more retention basin, especially in the areas that the city engineers have identified as the most troublesome. So, all those steps are being taken, I think, given the high-level rain back in May of 2014. We've been working really diligently since then to try to rectify that situation and always improve. And as I said, flooding, you know, we just saw with, granted, we don't have any hurricanes hitting us recently, but a massive amount of water can certainly affect any system. And I think with the building of the new wastewater treatment plant, the addition of the water retention, and some of the other small policy measures we've had to enable residents to be able to take a few more matters in their own hands, I feel like those will help to improve our situation here in North Olmsted.
Okay. And unless there's a follow-up, I'll move on to the next question. And we're going to start with Mr. Limpert again this time. Now, what ideas do you have for attracting more businesses to North Olmsted and for making the business district more attractive?
Sure, yeah. I think one of the big things we need to do, we have a business consultant that helps go around and look for opportunities within the business district. I think we need to continue to be more aggressive in reaching out to businesses that are looking to expand and looking for growth and looking for new areas, and try to play on our strategic location as a city, look at other incentive measures that we can provide within that business pool of prospects, and try to, you know, work collaboratively with council and the administration to try to close that opportunity and bring those individuals here into the city.
Okay.
Or businesses, I should say.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Well, this year, I was a member of the Charter Review Commission, and we, actually, there will be an issue on the ballot to allow mixed-use building in the city, which will allow for, like, a retail base, and you could either have office buildings or even residential up above, similar to some of the situations in Crocker Park. And I think that would open up an opportunity for some of the older areas to maybe, you know, take older buildings down and bring new building with some type of mixed use. The other thing is not even necessarily attracting new business, but, you know, keeping the businesses here. I'd like to find a way, maybe through the city's website, to encourage more people to shop in North Olmsted before they go out to Crocker Park or Avon. You know, think North Olmsted first. There are a lot of communities where the people that live there take such pride in their city that they will shop, you know, in their city before they even think of going somewhere else. And I think, you know, I'm encouraged, we have a theater back in the city, and so that's keeping people here and keeping some of their money spent here, and they'll go to dinner and a movie. And I think things like that are, you know, will help keep what we have here in addition, you know, to attracting new stuff, new businesses as well.
Okay. Move on to the next question, or does anyone want a follow-up?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Now, Mayor Kevin Kennedy earlier this year unveiled plans to spend $11.7 million repairing and renovating the 90-year-old Springvale Ballroom and attached golf course clubhouse. Not many municipalities have their own golf courses anymore. It has proved for most of them not to be a money-making operation, although in North Olmsted, apparently, that is a different situation from what the mayor and finance director has said, that it is making money there. But do you favor spending that much money on upgrades to Springvale? Why or why not? And I think, are we starting with Tim this time?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, I am in favor. I play golf there occasionally. My son actually had a wedding there at the ballroom a couple of years ago, and, you know, the money there, I believe, is well-spent. It's, you know, it's upgraded, it's a top-notch facility. The drainage at the golf course is, you know, superior to what it used to be. They're getting a lot of play out there, and it does seem to be paying off. I think it was a wise investment to do something like that, and I've noticed, I hear comments too about the facelift at the recreation center, and everyone's impressed with that. I think there's some money well-spent there, and people are impressed with that. So, I think the residents are, for the most part, are happy with that.
Okay. Dwayne?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Bruce. I actually am undecided on that, given the presentation that we got from the administration. I still haven't seen any kind of cost-to-value projections of what kind of revenue the enhancements would bring in versus the amount of debt that we'd be taking on by building all of these facilities. I think it was a good start with a good plan, but I think that's one thing I bring to council, is the thought of, okay, well, what is this really trying to get us to long-term? Sure, it sounds good. Sure, it will add excitement and intrigue to users of those facilities, but until we can actually analyze and get a good projection of how we're going to make that money back, we still have debt on the land from when we purchased the golf course, and while we're have a positive revenue going from the ballroom and from the golf course, if you have to see any analysis that shows that we'd be able to, you know, that's actually a positive investment.
Okay. Well, traffic on Lorraine Road near Great Northern Mall and along Great Northern Boulevard leading Interstate 480 is often tied up with traffic, and that generates a lot of resident complaints. What can the city do to improve that situation? And are we starting with Dwayne this time?
Sure. I mean, I think we already worked with the state to try and expand the Great Northern Boulevard exit, and that project was ongoing here and should be wrapping up this year. So, that's one way that we opened up the congestion on the off-ramp, try to allow more accessibility to the mall and as well as residential areas off the Great Northern exit. You know, and just continue to work with the state and the county to make sure that we can expand our roadways, continue to work with the county. We are recently improving Bradley Road, which has become quite a vein between North Olmsted and North Ridgeville and Westlake, and that's being redone. We worked with the county. One thing that I asked is to get with the county to make sure that when they did that road, they actually expanded out into Westlake and not stop at the city line. So, those are the kind of things that I'm looking at to make sure that we don't just look at Lorraine Road as a whole, but the whole traffic system and veins as well, that arteries that keep expanding and shifting as some of the other groups, you know, grow in their residential base, other cities, I should say.
Okay. Tim, what do you think the city can do to improve traffic?
Well, there are a lot of challenges there, and I was reading parts of the master plan where they were talking about the traffic signal timing, and I think that's, I think that's a real key to alleviating some of the congestion anyway. I mean, there are often times where you start from one light, you go, you know, an eighth of a mile, and you're sitting at a red light again, and two cars will come out. And there's no reason that they can't change the timing on all those lights so that there's a little more flow and things don't back up so much. You often find that, you know, very little traffic coming out of certain exits from the mall or from, like, the Toys R Us light and things like that often pose a lot of congestion, especially in the early mornings and the afternoons when people are trying to get to and from work. And I, it's not the total solution, but I think just even upgrades to the traffic signal system would go a long way in relieving some of that congestion.
Okay.
I just have one other comment on that, too. I mean, one is, as traffic-filled as North Olmsted is, there's other cities that have much bigger issues in the nearby area and I think are struggling with it a lot more. I think we have taken some initiative, as Tim said, of looking at travel signalizations, new traffic signals to improve the timing. But, I mean, that's one area where I think North Olmsted's always done well, is Lorraine Road is a very large artery with a lot of different lanes to get that traffic from one side of the city to the other.
Okay. Now, the state has cut local government funds in half in recent years for most communities. How has North Olmsted coped with this, and what other ideas do you have to try and cope with reductions in state funding in the future? And I think we'll start with Mr. Smith.
Well, being a small business owner, I oftentimes, I have hills and valleys, and I'll have to work through, you know, periods of slow cash value or, you know, cash flow. And you, sometimes you'll end up kind of reinventing the way that you do things. I was very encouraged to see the mayor's court come in. You know, it took a lot of revenue that we were sent into Rocky River, and there were a lot of people that were against that idea, but that's also paid off, and it's generating revenue for the city. You know, I, the last thing you want to do is raise taxes. So, you have to find other ways to maybe cut services or to streamline services so that it's cost-effective, but it's not, you know, it's not adding an additional tax burden. I know with the, you know, the garbage pickup system as well, a lot of people were against that when it first came in, but it seems to go real well, and...
The automated pickup system?
Yeah, and with the recycling end of it, you know, it's actually, you know, bringing money back as well. So, you know, it's, there are a lot of ways that you can sit down and look at different situations, and, you know, that's why there's seven members of council, that's why there's a lot of people in administration to come up with better ideas, you know, to do more with less.
Okay. Dwayne?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Smith had hit it right on the head with a lot of those. I think one point to make is during the deer hunting debate, that's adding a service and a cost to our city. I think I was one of the few councilmen that actually asked, what is that cost and what are we looking at? So, you know, I think that's one of the issues that you always have to look at, is when you're adding a new service, it's great for your residents, but what are you going to cut? I think we've been very smart over the last few years in regards to try to pay down what was a significant amount of bond debt that was built up over the course of the 1980s and 1990s. So, I think we have gotten a lot wiser on how we need to pay down that debt and also make sure that we provide top-notch services, which I think Mr. Smith already covered a lot of those, and I don't feel like I need to repeat those. You know, but you always have to look at something to be more innovative, but at the same time, not short-change your residents.
Okay. And he did bring up something that I probably would like to ask you about as well, and I think he kind of made your position clear on this, and that is that Mayor Kennedy brought back a mayor's court, and that has been controversial with some people. How do you feel about the mayor's court? Do you think that was a good idea?
Well, so, I think anytime that you create your own service, there's benefits. I think we are seeing that with increased revenue. I think we also have to be intelligent about what services we provide, and we have to be fair to not only the residents, but also visitors of the city to make sure that whatever areas we expand that program in, that we can provide just, fair, and a better deal, so to speak, around that service. So, it definitely has brought in revenue, and I think that's a creative way that cities have to look at to try to compensate for some of these funding cuts. But we also have to be fair to those residents and make sure that, you know, some people get scared when they hear mayor's court, you know, and we have to be aware of that, and we have to make sure that we're upfront, and I think the mayor has been about keeping things to the book as we can.
Okay. And do you want to elaborate on your position in the mayor's court?
No, the only thing I might add is that people were saying that, you know, you can't have a mayor's court, you know, he can't preside over it, and they do have a magistrate, not to, so people are not confused that the mayor's running the court, actually. It's just, the term is the mayor's court, but there's a magistrate who's actually running that and to make sure that it's not, you know, a politically-based type of a system.
Okay.
And that just goes, sorry, but that just goes into what I was saying of just, we need to make sure that we follow the right process and do things even better in some ways than the Rocky River Court for the areas that we try to preside over.
All right. And what about regionalism? Cities are always looking to cut costs and kind of cooperate more on services. I think there's been some talk of North Olmsted maybe looking at if it can provide dispatch services for other communities. How do you feel about regionalism, and are we starting with Mr. Smith this time?
I think I went first with...
Okay. Well, then, let's step forward.
Yeah, it was me, yeah. I think you always have to look at options, right? But as with the dispatch, I think the administration did a good analysis of that, and when we did that initially, it wasn't for us. Obviously, over the years, issues will continue to be revisited as policies change and efficiencies change. But you can't really be pro or con for regionalism. You have to really look at each issue as it stands and understand what's best for your community, and that goes for safety, fire, dispatch. You have to look at what you've done as a city, what kind of resources and assets you have, how well your people are skilled, can maintain those, how your residents feel about those services that you are providing. You know, you can't just look at the bottom dollar and say, oh, this is a better decision. You really have to look at that whole package of how well are we doing at that, how are our residents feeling about the service we're providing, and then look at the overall value, so to speak, of consolidating. And, you know, just coming from consulting and being in the business world, what looks like a good deal isn't always a good deal just because the number that they show in front of you is you're going to save this much money, because there's always those costs that you don't see or you don't think of, and that has to be factored in.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, each individual's, you know, part of regionalism would have to be looked at to see if it's cost-effective. And they did look at the dispatch, and another thing, talking to some of the firefighters, my father was a firefighter, and when seconds matter, and you have an external dispatch system that maybe isn't familiar with the city, and they're trying to dispatch, you know, one or the other fire station and have a squad get there at the quickest time, there may be some confusion and, you know, like I said, seconds matter. You don't want to make a rash decision and save a few bucks and cost someone's life. So, you know, you have to weigh them out, and no one wants to really release control of the grip that they have on, you know, their own, you know, system. But if it makes sense, you know, to regionalize and pair up with other surrounding cities, then, you know, it, you know, that's something I would absolutely be for, but, you know, you do have to weigh things out before you make that decision.
Okay. So, in favor of it, but you want to make sure that safety comes first, is what you're saying?
Absolutely, sure.
I just have one more comment, and that, the one thing that I have been, over everything since I've been on council, you know, until you get on council or you get really involved with the city, you know, the safety and fire services are something that, you know, you only see them when you need them. And I've been very impressed with our police chief and our fire chief. We've had a series of promotions, you know, we've really caught up and adjusted some of our human resources management as people have been retiring, and I've just been overly impressed with those groups, the way they've been bringing that professional mindset of doing anything they need to do, working collaboratively with other cities through, you know, immediate response, shared response, work with Olmsted Township, as well as, you know, really developing a professional source. Not that we didn't have one before, but I've really been impressed with our fire chief since I've been on. So, I just wanted to add that, that I'm very pleased with the services that North Olmsted is providing. I think it's top-notch.
Okay. All right. And we are at the point now where each of the candidates will have an opportunity to ask at least one question of his opponent, if you'd like. And Mr. Smith, do you have a question for Mr. Limpert?
Well, you know, as being on council for, you know, two years now, you know, just what are, you know, do you have certain accomplishments that you've made that you're, you know, you're proud of, or are there things that you're looking at that you would like to bring in, you know, down the road?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Tim. I think that's a great question. You know, one thing that our council was able to get through this year, which I think was very valuable, we had two pieces of legislation. One was that we improved tax abatement and new build opportunity to try and vary up our housing stock, which North Olmsted has a very, unfortunately, static housing stock. And the other thing that we've done is passed legislation to improve on our property maintenance and oversight of renters to make sure that the housing stock that we do have in place is maintained and can increase in value and help our tax base stay strong to continue to pay off any of that debt as well as raise continued revenue. And I think all those things were a great collaborative effort across all of council and the administration to get a policy that makes sense and a policy that's going to help our city and the residents here, not only the owners of those properties, but the neighbors that live in this, live in their developments.
Okay. And did you have a question for Mr. Smith?
Yeah. So, Tim, I know you have gone to probably more meetings than even some of the council members over the last two years. So, I'd be interested, out of the votes that have occurred, what would be one thing that you would have done different or changed or done, voted in a different way?
Well, not necessarily that I would have changed a vote or voted in a different way, but sometimes I see, I don't get to attend as many committee meetings as I'd like to, but when I do, there, you know, sometimes they, they don't, they don't really get to the point, and things kind of, you know, go off-topic, and there aren't enough questions asked, I think, in some of the committee meetings. So, as part of council, you know, I think that's where it's important. I mean, once it's up in front of council, that legislation is already done, or that ordinance is already done. In the committee meetings is where you need to ask the questions and ask the right questions to make sure that the proper legislation gets in front of the council members beforehand.
Okay. Well, we were supposed to start with opening statements from each of the candidates, and unfortunately, I skipped right over that.
We can just edit that to the front, right?
Well, let's make it a closing statement then, in terms of why you are running and what you hope to accomplish in office, and let's start with Mr. Limpert.
Sure. So, just, I'll start off with just a little bit of history about myself. So, my family's lived in North Olmsted for over 100 years, and I've had a lot of civic pride just growing up. My grandfather was a councilman, and my father was a councilman. So, just growing up, I had a real love and passion for the city of North Olmsted and civic pride. I was an army officer for six years after attending the United States Military Academy. I got my masters at Ohio State, and I came back home to North Olmsted because North Olmsted's important to me, it's a report in my family. I have a two-year-old and a two-month-old, and I'm looking forward to them being raised here in North Olmsted. I'm excited about some of the initiatives that have happened, not only in education, but here within government, and I want to be an active participant in shaping that to make sure that my family wants to stay here in North Olmsted as I did.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
As many people in North Olmsted know, I've been the owner of Joe D's Printing on Lorraine Road for over 33 years. I've always been a big supporter of the schools, the city, and many local organizations. As a business owner, you quickly learn that you have to watch every penny spent, and sometimes you have to make some pretty tough decisions. So, I think as a councilman, I could bring that to the table, that I have a world of experience, you know, watching pennies and making some tough decisions at times. I've gone through two recessions in the business and quite a bit of technology change, you know, that have put a lot of small printers out of business. So, you reinvent yourself a little bit. I'm very encouraged with things going on in the city. As we mentioned before, Springvale and... As we mentioned before, Springvale and improvements at the rec center, there's great strides, you know, tackling the flooding issues. And we've, with only, we passed a levy to give us a much-needed new middle school and high school, which is very encouraging. I think it kind of makes North Olmsted a city of destination. And, you know, I mentioned the master plan, you know, a lot of great ideas there as well. So, you know, I just would love to be part of the team that keeps to move this forward.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you both for joining us today, and that's about all that we have time for. Please check back to Cleveland.com to read stories about debates, issues, and candidates for the upcoming election. Early voting starts October 6th, or started October 6th. Thank you for joining us.